Okay. All right, we're gonna go ahead and call to order this this regular meeting of the Killing the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission, and thank everyone for coming on the second Monday of the month so we didn't have to do New Year's Day with all of you people, which was a much better, much better option. Okay, uh, we'll start with the roll call.
Sandy Eggers.
Here.
Rodney Galton.
Here.
Paul Archer.
Yep.
Karina Torrey present.
And you said that, um...
Chris is absent with notification.
Notification, okay. All right, we had our two sets of minutes, the December 4th, 2023 regular meeting, as well as the December 16th, 2023, uh, special meeting site walk, and everyone who was here was on that site walk. Which was nice, we got that.
I was not here December 16th.
You were, oh, you were at the other site walk?
Yes.
That's right.
November.
That's right. I remember you getting in from vacation at one, but it was the one before.
Yeah, I was still on vacation.
Okay. So do we have a motion on the minutes?
Uh, motion to approve the December 4th regular meeting minutes, and motion to approve the December 16th minutes with one revision.
And that would be?
Uh, Karina Torrey was not present for that site walk.
Huh, and it says it there and we just had that discussion.
Mm-hmm. I might have borrowed off the month prior homework.
Yeah.
That's probably where that came from.
We hadn't had any sight walks in so long.
She was absent too.
So we have a motion?
Oh yeah, but she was also absent.
Yes.
She was present and absent.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Okay, do we have a second? Motion's been made and seconded to accept the December 4th, 2023 minutes as they were presented, and December 16th, 2023 minutes with the notation that, uh, Karina was not present. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, I don't think we have anyone here for citizens' participation, do we? I think it's all for a application.
Yep.
We'll move right on then. First item is application 23-1577 of Gavin Sheehan for construction of a single-family home at, uh, 350 Breakneck Hill Road. You were there for that site walk.
And I have the folder up there for you guys, some some new stuff, some new drainage. There is a newer...
Send some in each direction.
Um, a newer plan, um, as well.
Drainage sent to Rodney.
Thank you.
Rodney, I don't know if that's the newest copy of the plan.
November 2023, there's another one here. All right, so we will ignore those. Okay, uh, actually, before we have you start, Norm, there were some comments in here. Jonathan, do you want to just go through those comments quickly before Norm starts? I see that there were a couple of comments from Dave, which I'm sure you're planning to address anyhow.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I believe most, if not all, the comments were addressed from Dave. We also had, uh, some updated comments from Alec, uh, as well, um, the assistant, uh, engineer assistant. So, uh, they mainly revolved around the box culvert, um, also, um, some boulder sizing, um, on the plan. And I believe all of that has been addressed. We also got some updated drainage, uh, or drainage report as well, so...
Right, that, um, that, those, um, uh, came in this afternoon. Um, Dave, Dave had contacted me this morning. Um, he's still out, um, ill, and, uh, he was kind enough to email me this morning and ask me to email him, the plans and drainage comps so he can give them one more look. Um, I received comments, uh, this afternoon, uh, through Alex, uh, to Alec, excuse me, my son's name's Alex, so... And, uh, mainly they were, they were really just drafting things, a couple of minor drafting details, uh, match matching elevations, uh, on the plan to the drainage comps and so forth. But, uh, in general, uh, the, the major change to the plan, uh, from last time, is that I have a little bit bigger box culvert than, uh, than originally. I, I had a, had a two-by-four box culvert originally, uh, and although it, it did pass a 100-year storm, they're really, uh, I, I felt a little more comfortable, especially after the couple of big rain events that we had, to make it a little bit bigger, uh, so I made it a two-foot by five-foot box culvert, uh, in lieu of that. Um, I've also modified, uh, uh, the, the box culvert detail to show, um, some, uh, modified riprap, uh, along the edge of the footing, uh, to, uh, prevent, uh, any, any kind of erosion that might occur around, uh, around the base of the box culvert. And, uh, and I put, uh, also some, uh, some boulders, um, at the, uh, at the entrance of the, um, of the box culvert as well, uh, to, um, uh, provide, uh, that may not show on my color drawing. But what we did is kind of, uh, basically made, uh, boulder wing walls, uh, prior to entering, entering the box culvert, uh, just to kind of, uh, guide the, the, uh, the flow of the stream, uh, in, in that direction as it got there. And I did that to, as a result of having, uh, gone and looked at the site after we had one of those significant rainfalls, and I noticed the stream was pretty wide at that point, so...
Just to bring it in?
This would, this would help when, when it's flowing wide. It wasn't flowing very fast, but it was a lot wider. Um, even with a 100-year storm, we don't have, uh, we only, we only have, uh, velocities of around six feet per second, which isn't terribly erosive, um, uh, but, uh, we've included the modified riprap, uh, to prevent any scour, uh, along the edge of it. And then, as, as far as the, uh, the impact, um, we, we, you know, as a, by putting this in, uh, we are proposing 3,250 square feet of wetlands impact, uh, but 1920 square feet of the impact will be permanent. The rest of it will be, um, restored, uh, as part of the project af- after the, uh, construction is completed.
And everything you have is the latest up-to-date plans to look at for calcs, right, Rodney?
Yes.
Yes, that's, I was just reviewing those, that everything looks fine there.
They look good, and since we have Alec here, anything to...
The only thing that I, I noticed was, uh, on the mic. As Jonathan said, the only small nitpicky thing that I picked up on was the invert's not matching on the hydroCAD calcs versus the plan sheet. No big deal, and then again, just the two-by-four versus two-by-five on the standard detail versus the plan.
Yeah.
And, uh, just, I mean...
More housekeeping than...
More housekeeping than anything, no major issues, changes. I did go through the, the calculations, very, like you said, very straightforward, kind of an in-and-out scenario, so...
Yep.
That's all that, uh, Dave agreed with me as well, obviously, he's out sick, but, uh...
And, and the drainage computations are, um, are rather conservative, because there are a couple of small wetland areas on the property where you've got, you know, some storage for the drainage as it comes downstream. I didn't even account for that, I just assumed it'd be a straight shot through, so, you know...
By tomorrow night, there might be.
Who knows? There may be, yeah, I know it, between the, the snow melt and another potential four inches of rain.
I know.
I know it.
Crazy.
It's been a ridiculous year, for sure.
Did you catch anything?
Yeah, what, what made you move the footing drain? Last time you told us the footing drain was gonna come out into the...
Yeah, well, what, what it was, it was supposed to, and then the Department of Health said, hey, you're not showing the footing drain, and I had my drafter, I said, can you, can you put a footing drain on it for me? And, and that's where he put it, and then it got submitted to the Health Department. I said, okay, well...
Reality, huh?
Reality, so... It was, it's, it's, it was in the limit of clearing anyway, we didn't clear any further to put that footing drain in. Yeah, that, that was the, the original intention was to put it in the swale. Uh, and then after the plans went in, they were printed out, and I was like, oh, all right, well, I was gonna put it in the swale, but...
Just for clerical, um, you got break deck, you got an extra C in there, on the road?
Oh yeah, you do.
That's a, that's a, 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 a breach connect. Thank you. I did not, B-R-E-A-C-K.
Gonna, did that happen when, when the footing drain got put in, you think?
Possibly, you pushed an extra C in there, yeah.
Now, you've had more of a chance to look at the calculations, you find anything in there?
No, the calculations, excuse me, the calculations look fine. Um, I'm just looking at what was added here at the crossing, just to make sure nothing jumps out at me.
Okay, and I'm sure you're more comfortable with the two-by-five than...
Yeah, absolutely. What, what's the free board, um, in the culvert, do you know? Over the 100?
Uh, oh, uh, the 100, well, we've got the, we've got more than a foot from the, from the, um, uh, the top to the, to, over the driveway.
Okay.
More than a foot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll probably just wait a second, so, give you a little time, Tom. It's the first time you've seen those, so...
Just to catch everybody else up that maybe wasn't here, or we weren't live last month.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we did look at it, um, the engineer submitted a prudent alternative, um, that was explored last month for a different crossing at a little bit different location, uh, to try to minimize what we thought would be minimizing impacts.
A little further south.
Um, but, uh, I think, Norm, we found that they was, it was worse.
Yeah, it ended up, it ended up being a, a greater impact, and, um, and also, um, it would have required about an extra half acre of clearing, uh, to do it as well, so...
Norm, it looks like you're proposing maybe, uh, some slight grading, uh, at the entrance, where, where you put the, uh, boulders, the proposed boulders?
Yes.
You're, you're, it looks like you're, uh, proposing some, some grading through there. Um, why, why are you grading that area out, just out of curiosity?
Just, we, we're raising the driveway at that point, so, in order, in order to get cover over the top of the culvert, so it's, it's really necessary to kind of do some grading there as well.
Okay.
And I'm thinking that the boulders make sense, to help define it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, it's a good idea to put wing walls in there.
There's, there's plenty of them on site, so...
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's a good idea to put wing walls there. Yeah, nothing is, is jumping out at me, so...
In that case?
I'll make a motion to approve application 231577 of Gavin Sheehan.
With a few clerical corrections that have been mentioned, right?
Sure.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve application 23-1577, uh, as it was presented, with the minimal clerical changes that had been discussed by engineering and, and the committee, commission. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. All right, so we'll swap off. Okay, you got a lot, and he ended up bringing more. That's more of...
Oh, yeah.
Is that one, okay, these are all, we're getting at least some of it out of his way.
There are the newest copies on top.
Okay.
These old ones? Yeah.
Oh, we got a lot of them. I'll share with you. We have one extra one. Well, we got three, so we can kind of share them.
All right.
Okay. Next item is application 93-1578 of Gary Jaworski, uh, for a one-lot re-subdivision of a single-family home. All right. You want to start, and actually, do you want to give us a little rundown? Because we had been out there on the site walk, had a lot of questions regarding the town's activity there in the past. I don't know if you got anything filled in on that, John, or if that's something Alec might know a little more about?
Um, yeah, I'll let Alec touch on it a little bit. We did find, or Alec was able to find, uh, some of the easement, original sub subdivision plans.
Yeah, so I, I ended up looking up, uh, anything I could, really, and I ended up finding the original subdivision map from '78, '79, and basically, note number two on that plan, now bear with me, it reads, "The town of Kenneady has granted the unrestricted right to discharge surface storm waters onto remaining property from existing culverts and spoways." So that's lots four through 13 on the plan, number 1602 would be lot five, 1594, just up the hill, would be lot four, and 1614, the one just downhill, would be lot six, all of which do have an outlet onto said property. Now, the deed doesn't reflect that necessarily for any of those properties. The deed does, uh, reference said subdivision map. Now, that's above my, above me at that point, in, in terms of how that actually shakes out. But there's, there's something there, you know? When that was built or put in, I can't say, I have old stuff from '91, it's showing it on it. But if, in fact, the town does have, you know, the right to maintain, then, you know, I think something could be done, certainly. Not, it, nothing's been brought to, in front of me, per se, like, you know, go check this out and, and figure it out, kind of a thing. But that's what I was able to find.
So it's something that, you know, as we move forward, I, I don't think it's really impactful on this application today.
Oh no, but it's cute.
Um, but it will most likely be something, North Road in particular, we have other drainage work, other stuff in the works, um, and that, that's kind of uphill from this.
Yep.
And, you know, drainage tends to work downhill, so, um, this might be an area where we look to re-establish, um, what was historically there, um, but we think there's at least a prescriptive easement, um, as it, as it sits right now.
As well as a 25-foot slope easement down that entire side of the road for future highway development, which is interesting.
You're kidding?
No. No, and that is...
That makes a difference, I would think, on...
That is, in fact, in the deed. All, all the deeds. I mean, it, that was, I think it was a 16-lot subdivision, if I'm not mistaken, when it was initially done, and it was Henry Angel was the, was the gentleman, um, but yeah.
Wow. What year was it?
Seventy-eight.
Wow.
Seventy-eight, seventy-nine, so, in, in that ballpark.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight.
Revia seventy-nine.
Yeah.
Now, how does that affect our request that he go to CPA?
Well, I, I don't believe the applicant is, um, gonna be looking to move forward with a, a variance application, which, um, I'll let, uh, Dan talk about, but, um, what's being presented right now, I believe, is just a, a slight, uh, modification, keeping everything conforming within the, the setbacks. But, you know, that, that area, some of the old drainage and whatnot, we would have to do a larger check as this runs downstream and goes to the brook, it crosses a couple other properties currently. And it's kind of established, it's been there since the seventies. Uh, we wouldn't want to, um, reroute something and accidentally starve a wetland either. So if there was any large, um, changes or proposed modifications by the town or in conjunction with, um, uh, property owners, uh, you would be seeing an application in the future.
Okay.
And just my two cents, I can, I can tell you that we don't have any plans of doing any reconstruction, reclamation, I mean, no major work going from there down. We did the upper section last year, very flat, and then we took care of that, but I know there, the Highway Department's looking to pave that next year, so with that being said, you can kind of rule out any work being done for...
But that goes back 45 years already, so...
And the drainage in that hole, from there down, is, to River Road, is a complete mess, I'll, I'll be honest. It's, it does all sorts of things, it crosses here, goes back there, and it all ends up in the swamp down there by Yosemite Valley.
There's definitely some maintenance, uh, items that we found, like, in terms of, like, the outfall and stuff. It, it's not really going to, like, a really protected, you know, um, swaled area, and I think it's only led to more scoring, you know, going down, so there's some items that, you know, to, historically would fall under, like, a, a maintenance, road maintenance package, um, that would probably be covered, uh, under capital improvement in the future.
Now that we've all been enlightened, now you can tell us what you really plan to do.
All right, good evening, everyone, I'm Daniel Blanchett, I'm a licensed civil engineer. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Jaworski, they live at 1602 North Road. They're hoping to cut off a new lot for their son, Gary. Since the previous meeting, I know at the site walk, we discussed trying to keep the, the building closer to the road. There is a, a pretty significant 75-front setback here. And after discussing it with my clients, he's hoping to avoid a variance route for that front setback. And so what I've done is I've taken that house and I've moved it about 11 feet closer to the road, right up to that setback line. I know at the site walk, we also talked about flood zones, I looked at the FEMA maps, there's no flood zones associated with any of these drainage ditches, um, crossing the road. I'm, I'm not too concerned about flood zone, I know there's not a really well-defined channel or steep bank there, but taking a bigger, a step back and looking at the topography, I'm not typically concerned, again, with the house being at 525. Right, I'm, I'm not too worried about flood, floodwater causing an issue with this house. We did get wet, um, NDDH approval on December 27th. And, yeah, again, that's, that's really all I have, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, now that you're looking at the plans as they are now, and we've been out there, what's everyone's thoughts?
The first thing that, um, concerns me is the limits of your erosion control. I think that they need to be extended, uh, on both ends. I mean, we saw the slope out there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think, I think it's probably best if you extend the, uh, south end, probably all the way up to 526, where it crosses the driveway.
Okay.
And on the other end, probably extend it up to the 526 over there as well, yeah. Yep. And I would also recommend either, uh, hay bale backed silt fence out there, or super silt fence or something like that, just because of the slopes that you're dealing with there.
Yeah, I have no objection to that.
Right, so right now, we're just talking about modifications to the ENS.
Mm-hmm.
That's proposed. Anything you're catching?
Yeah, what, um, I'm concerned with, Dan, is that you're basically saying that the property lines on this plan don't, aren't a, a boundary opinion, but yet we're holding exactly 75 feet off the front property line.
Um, so again, this is a re-subdivision, we've done A2 surveying.
Okay.
If you look at this sheet, this is...
I didn't see that sheet.
This is the A2 survey sheet with boundary opinions.
I'm just, I'm just reading this plan.
Of course, yeah.
Okay. So there is an A2 that's attached to this?
Yes, sir, yep, sheet two is an A2 survey, re-subdivision map.
Perfect.
Yeah, sheet, sheet three was the main one that was updated.
Yeah.
But sheet two, you know, slightly updated, obviously, with the new house location.
Yeah, we had no revisions to sheet one or two, um, and so I didn't provide new copies to Jonathan.
Karina, anything jumping out at you about it?
Could you go back to the map that shows the whole site?
Of course.
I'm just kind of curious about proximity between where this house sits and what's existing.
Okay, sure. So, let's look at sheet two. Again, the existing house is very far back. This is the existing house right here. Here's the proposed house. This is a 30-scale drawing, and so, um, you know, 400 feet plus from, from any, any existing development there.
It's actually a little closer proximity to the budding property, I think, than to the existing house that's on the property, isn't it?
It's probably close, this, this gentleman, yeah, both of our neighbors have very long driveways to houses out and back, but then if we got one lot over...
Yes, I think there's, you go at the diagonal, I think that's the closest.
Yep, I agree.
I think even that house, though, is a couple hundred feet off the road.
I think it is, but I think it's the closest of the bunch.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's actually the only one you can see from the proposed house.
Yeah, I think only because of agriculture, you know, they've cleared the front for livestock, yeah.
Lot different than what we were thinking and looking, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was, I was really hoping they'd, they'd take the variance route, um...
It looks very wet.
It, it, it's, yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
So there's like this one little spot where you...
Yes.
Yeah.
That's it, exactly.
Yes, yes.
Right, between the two drainage patterns, I tried to center it as much as I could in between those, but, um, it is close, certainly.
And Dan, are they look, they're looking at like a raised rant style?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we would have all been happier if it was going differently. What are you thinking, though?
Well, like I said, I, I, I was hoping...
I was too.
They would take the variance route. Um, I, it's, it's, you know, obviously, it's up to them, but, uh, you're gonna, you're gonna be, you're gonna be in the, in the 200-foot upland review no matter where you go on this, so it really doesn't matter.
Yep.
So from a staff perspective, just holding that front setback, um, we'd be looking more on the zoning end, but, um, having it, uh, you know, all pinned out by, by the surveyor prior to moving forward with the footings and whatnot. You know, just to make sure it's all good.
Mm-hmm.
And we have, we have NDDH approval in the folder.
It is not in the folder, um, they tend, it's about, it's about to be in the folder. But they usually, they usually get sent to our building side of the office first, um, and they, they look, if there's not a zoning permit yet, they kind of go in a file, you know, but we have now.
Dan, what was the reason that they didn't want to go for a variance? Time-wise or...
Yeah, just in terms of time and money, a variance takes a public hearing, it adds a couple months to the schedule. We have to do certified mailing, my client's hoping to avoid that.
And it's, it's their right.
Yeah, yep.
I'm just curious.
Yeah. Um, like I said, we've, we've asked, and some people have done it, and we've asked, and some people just said, nope, not interested, so...
A variance potentially too could set off timeframe for the re-subdivision's public hearing, which has already been scheduled through planning and zoning as well.
And the reality is, there's only a tiny spot there.
Yeah. Yeah, even if you...
Anyway.
Yeah, even if you move it, it's, you're really not saving much as far as buffer...
You're moving it from here to the other end of the room.
Yeah, yep, so...
So long as they don't decide to pave a road in front of them.
Like I said, highly unlikely.
It's amazing, some of the things that are included in, in some of that old stuff that you don't even think of anymore.
Unless you go digging, you would never, like, you would never know. I, I didn't even know that was a subdivision, and Jonathan put a bug in my ear, and I had no idea.
Found it?
Yeah, and the subdivision map, they don't even show the smaller one. They show the larger one, but the subdivision map makes no, no mention of that smaller one from the catch base, and I would assume the catch basin predates the subdivision, um, but it's, again, it's not shown on any mapping that I've found.
All right, you guys.
Uh, motion to approve application 23-1578 with the modifications...
ENS, yep.
Uh, to the erosion control.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve application 23-1578, uh, with the inclusion of the modifications that were discussed to the ENS plan. All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next item is application 23... Thank you.
Thank you.
23-1579 of Samantha Mengi for construction of detached secondary dwelling unit. Now, we had you look at some things at that one, too. That was a drainage...
All right. Yeah, um, I did provide Jonathan with a letter from Joseph Thoreau. Uh, um, as you recall, when we went out there, there was standing water.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the area, kind of behind, behind where the house is going. It was, uh, Joe, uh, did go there and he orged there, he did not find any evidence of hydroic soils. Uh, he did note in his letter that we had had a couple of really big rain events, um, you know, prior to the site walk, and that the road, uh, in that area is about four to five feet higher, uh, so, uh, it's just... So it's just a low depression, which most likely would be filled at the time of construction because from that area, that just happens to be a very low, low point there, kind of a flat area. But as you, as you head to the east, it does drain downward toward the wetlands, so just a matter of, I think he puts like a foot, foot and a half of fill in that area when he excavates the foundation and that drainage drill just, just shed off like it's supposed to.
We had discussed that when we were on-site, that we just had a big rain event, so chances are, but better to be safe than sorry.
Yeah, well, well, and Joe, you know, Joe, when I first contacted him, he, he didn't, he didn't even recall. He goes, he goes typically, he goes, I'd be able to tell you, he goes, but honestly, you know, I don't, I don't recall. So he went back out there and he said, oh yeah, okay, now I remember this area. But, you know, once again, it was just due to the fact that there had been a couple of pretty significant rain events and the water was pooled there, so.
Was there anything else other than our concern about water that's been sitting everywhere the last few months?
What about DPH?
We, we do not have their final approval and only because they want a floor plan for the building.
Oh, really?
That's, and that's the only reason. He says, well, I'm fine with it as soon as I get the floor plan, so I don't have, we don't have a final floor plan for the building, but he's gotta, he's gotta meet the zoning requirements as well, because for an accessory structure, he can't have more than one bedroom. So the plan he, he originally sent me had two bedrooms and I said, and I, I said, hey, you can't have two bedrooms here. It doesn't allow it. And he goes, well, the other one's not going to be a bedroom. It's an office. I said, well, by health code definition, it's a bedroom.
Got to go there, yeah.
So to clarify, detached can have two.
Detached.
In Killingley, detached can have two.
Can't have two.
Yep, but that could impact the septic.
It, it could impact the septic because we're saying we're adding one bedroom
Yep.
to it, so, but the way that the health code works with the existing septic system, as long as he's not increasing the flow more than fifty percent, all he has to do is demonstrate that he's got the area to expand if necessary in the future, so.
The only trouble is, we've always had that precedent in place that there needs to be an approval.
Well, we can, we can approve this with, with a condition.
Contingent upon?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
With a condition. And that's probably what we're gonna have to do here.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a, it's not like, it's not like it's new construction and it won't be approved. There is an existing septic system there.
Right.
It does meet the health code requirements. But they're just dotting their i's and crossing their t's, making sure that we've, you know, they've got everything.
By statute, a, a building permit could not be issued without the health department on this, so.
All right, I think that takes care of it then, doesn't it?
I think so. Motion to approve application twenty-three dash fifteen seventy-nine with the condition that town receives a copy of Department of Public Health's approval for the septic system.
And can we have, if you want, put a note in here under note seven and, and update it, Joe Thoreau today, when he just went out there?
Sure. But he didn't delineate, he just-
No, just ver, just-
Verified?
Verified.
Sure.
Just so anybody else looks at-
Delineated a certain date and verified.
Yep.
Boom, boom.
So be note seven?
Yeah.
Date note seven.
Just so that way, just in case anybody else looks.
Wetland review.
Yeah.
Okay. I will change my motion to include that amendment.
Okay, so a second now?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve application twenty-three dash fifteen seventy-nine contingent upon Northeast District Department of Health approval being turned into the town and to update note seven to include that the
The date that he gave us.
The date, the date that the soil scientist had reviewed the, the property. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Even if you're leaving, I want to keep your pen. I have this thing where if I don't write these notes down, there's no telling what I might, what I might say, you know.
It says killing the engineering on it, so I don't, I don't want you to show any bias, but I've got, I've got like five hundred of them, so.
Well, then I guess it's about time that we all had some. Okay. Next item is application twenty-three dash fifteen eighty of the town of Killingley for the construction of the continuation of the river trail. It's phase five. I know I did not go down there. I'm assuming you probably know as much about the river trail as he does, having designed it. He's lived it his entire life.
I didn't actually design it. I wish I did, but I didn't.
He's lived it his whole life.
Yeah, back when it was the old trolley bed.
Want the big one?
Yeah, sure.
Little one.
Little one.
Go for it.
I really have nothing else to add other than what I went over last time. Proposed twenty-six hundred plus or minus linear foot of trail, basically going from the terminus currently at Gloria Ave to the crossing of Quandok Brook. The original intent was to go over the brook. However, costs kind of dictated that decision, if you will, so.
What do you think the timeframe is on that?
The next phase? It's kind of contingent upon Plainfield, Connecticut Deep, as well as the town of Killingley kind of playing nicely together, if you will. That section-
So the next phase gets more involved?
Very much so. Crosses through a section of deep property, which is a wildlife management area, which complicates things. But it would be awesome to get it finished, you know?
Yep.
But yeah, I mean, in terms of the plans, it's, it's very straightforward. There's actually no drainage proposed, other than sheet flow off the side of it. It is a paved trail. Quite a bit of cut and fills, as you can see there on the, the sheet that Jonathan has up, but aside from grading, it, it's, it's very much a classic road project, if you will. It's just ten feet wide. And basically, the next, the next step here would be to submit this to DOT because the construction funds come a hundred percent from DOT. They say, you know, they give you the authorization to advertise. Then we put it out to bid and we get it on the schedule for hopefully the spring. That's, that's the idea. And construction should be fairly simple as well in terms of timeframe and what, what have you. But that's kind of, that's kind of the gist of it. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
What do you think if you were still the fifteen-year-old on the dirt bike?
Uh, I would, I would love this, actually. My, my only concern is I, I don't see a lot of perimeter erosion controls going on here. I, in fact, just flipping through, I only saw it called out in a few areas. Why is that?
From what I could tell, they, they put them anywhere that you're, you're sloping towards the river there, obviously, so that, that's obviously the key area. Drops off almost twenty feet in spots to the river. And then as you go down towards the pond, which is the next wetland area to, I guess, the east, that would be the other location of stake hay bales. Now, that was that's where VHB decided that, you know, based on their design, this is where we want to put the erosion controls, if you will. So that, that, you know, that's how that kind of unfolded, if you will, but.
Because I, I'm looking at the sheet with the cul-de-sac and I see no perimeter erosion controls. None.
You talking that sheet there or the existing cul-de-sac on?
This, this one right here.
I'm sorry, I keep looking up there. I forget, I forget that you have a, a different set in your hand. I'm sorry.
Sheet twelve, so the one I have up on the screen with the cul-de-sac calls out like a hundred and three linear feet of sediment control on the east and at least three hundred and seventy-nine-
This has got nothing there.
-linear feet of sediment control to the west.
It's got nothing on, on the sheet here.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Okay, I'm wondering if that's an old, no, it should be the same copy.
Except your copies, the only, the only difference with Jonathan's is the, the title block.
Yeah.
Is the only changes that were made there.
Was a layer turned off. I've only reviewed the PDF, so I didn't-
I know that those are-
Something was turned off in this printing. It's not there at all.
Okay.
It's nothing there.
There's nothing there.
Okay, I would refer to the digital copy.
Can I look at what you, in the middle at the top of the name, I don't know.
All right, so this is what they call a grading plan, apparently, so.
So they don't have-
It, it, it isn't shown on this sheet. It is shown if you go to the other,
Okay.
the other end. I believe it's actually the beginning of the alignment. So in this thirty-four sheets, which-
What sheet is he on? What sheet is he on?
He was on, I forget my number, but it's called the grading plan for that.
See, if we want to-
Not construction plan.
Something real big. We go down to-
It was contours to the half-foot.
The title block should read "construction plans" for the ones that have the ENS.
The "construction plans"?
Yeah, I know, I'm looking at number twelve.
I found "construction plans." And there's the erosion control.
Yeah.
Yep.
For, for what reason they didn't put it on that one that you, I, I couldn't say. That's a bit silly to me. I don't know why that sheet exists at all, quite frankly.
Yeah, it, it's a little strange.
Yeah, I've never seen anything like it. It's got, like I said, contours to the half-foot, like-
Yes.
It's very odd.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah, I thought I was looking at a thirty-foot slope on one of the sheets when I looked at it.
Yeah, that's not right.
Okay.
And I believe throughout, it's calling for stake hay bales.
Feel better now?
Soap fence back.
I do feel better.
Stake hay bales.
I thought that was a gross oversight on somebody's, on somebody's part. Okay.
And at the very end on the sheet that Jonathan has up there, we're proposing to put basically a boulder wall blockade, if you will, to keep motorized vehicles, cars mostly, out of the brook, which would be next, and those, those boulders are actually coming from that big pile just, just up the trail. If you walk it, there's a massive pile of just boulders that were placed there at some point or another, so we're gonna use those from the site and should work out.
Well, now that there's hay bales.
Any erosion control. Do you want to take a look, Paul?
Nope.
No?
You were looking at those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve application twenty-three fifteen eighty of the town of Killingley for the construction of twenty-six hundred linear feet paved multi-use trail along the Tornabog River, phase five.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve application twenty-three dash fifteen eighty of the town of Killingley as it is presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Thanks, everybody.
All righty. Feel free to stay. You never know if we want any more engineer. May as well start getting used to it.
There's another-
We have a, like a little update on one that we want to-
Oh, okay.
Much to add, but if, if the question arises.
Okay, next item's application twenty-three dash fifteen eighty-one of JPF Rentals for the removal and reconstruction of a two-bedroom rental unit, reconfiguration of the existing parking and driveway within two hundred feet of an upland review area.
Good evening. For the record, my name's Paul DeWilleger, licensed land surveyor with PC Survey Associates. Just to reiterate the, the project, it's a portion of a larger project that where there's a seventeen-unit multifamily development within the area of your jurisdiction. We're two hundred feet away from a ponding area across Ware Road from the entrance to the site. We're proposing to upgrade the existing driveway where it enters Ware Road. We're gonna be widening it to twenty-four feet to access the, the bulk of the property. There's an existing two-unit rental, existing house, old house, early nineteen hundreds. And then behind that, to the rear, there's an existing mobile home that's a rental unit. The mobile home's gonna be removed and the new unit is to be constructed, you know, in front of it between the, the two-unit, existing two-unit house and where the mobile home is. Proposing six parking spaces between the two buildings. And currently, all the drainage is flowing toward Ware Road from from the area by the trailer. That drainage pattern's gonna remain the same. There's actually a reduction in impervious surface on the site. So the amount of drainage leaving the property is gonna be less than what is currently going on. There's a catch basin out in Ware Road that we anticipate will catch the runoff as it comes down and then send it across through the existing culvert to the, the ponding area.
We're just mentioning that I, we, I didn't catch it. They put the, he put the narrower driveway up on the-
Yeah, let me share the correct one.
On the plans.
Oh, okay. I've got a PDF with this new stuff on it.
Yeah.
With me, so. Impacts to the wetland should be pretty minimal. I mean, there's nothing new going across the street because, you know, you've got the crown of the road. It's gonna contain it on, on that side.
Hey, did you ever find where that pipe was?
That's what I was just gonna ask.
I figured that would be the question of the night.
That is what I wondered.
Where is that going?
There's a pipe that
Yeah, well-
Comes out of somewhere.
We tried scoping it. We ran a scope in there, but of course, it was all full of water. So we're having a difficult time seeing what, what, what was going on. But what best we could determine, it does go to the other side of the road. And it looked like there was some kind of fieldstone. I don't know if it's a dry well or what, something. There's something there that's pretty much catching ground, probably just groundwater coming in and, and running across the road through the pipe.
Huh.
We could turn Alec onto that one.
Yeah.
Find that, find that pipe out.
I already looked at it. It does flow.
He crawled in as far as he could.
It, it, it flows water during rain.
Yeah.
I mean, but I went, I had the metal detector out. I had the voodoo rod out. I'm looking all over. I had no, old maps. I talked to Beanie. I have nothing.
You talked to Beanie and didn't get an answer?
Nope. Except that he filled in the outlet upstream thirty, thirty-five years ago. No, I, it's a mystery. Whether you find it or not, who knows? I, I don't know.
You guys are busy on that site walk.
We did. We covered all of them and it was no snow. It wasn't raining or snowing.
Yeah, it was a pretty nice day.
Both me and Alec visited this site during one of our most recent rains, that big rainstorm we had with the wind. And both pipes were flowing, so.
It's doing something.
One's definitely coming from the catch basin. The other one, it's just coming from this direction.
The catch basin near the corner of the driveway there?
Yes.
Yeah.
The one we saw capture like a sub-pump.
Yes, yep, okay. And that's the updated plan with the twenty-four foot just-
Yeah, yeah. We widened the driveway just to allow, because Ware Road is, is so narrow, to allow turning radius for, you know, an emergency vehicle, for a fire truck needs to turn in there. We want to make sure it's wide enough to, to make that turn.
And when we went, there's really no wetlands issue at all. That pond is a water body, whatever you want to call that thing, is on the opposite side of the road. But it's within the, it's within the two hundred feet, so it needs to be reviewed and regulated, yep. But it is the other side of the road.
Yeah. It, it, nothing should make it across.
Unless it comes through that pipe.
So it kind of goes without saying, if during construction, we find that there needs to be significant upgrades or changes beyond what we would consider normal maintenance with, with those pipes, particularly if it's related to this project, not necessarily the road, we'd be coming back here, even just for an update, to make sure the commission didn't want any new information or, or a new application. But generally, we're talking about potentially only an off-site thing right now. So we don't, we're not, it's unclear if it runs into the property. Probably without excavating.
Yeah. But you think that other pipe goes to- But you think that other pipe goes to a dry well of some sort?
That's what it appears, I mean.
Where is that located?
Yeah.
If we can, if we can get in there when it's drier, you know, maybe we can get a better indication of. It seems like it comes across at an angle here, and it may be between the two driveways.
Okay.
So you might hit it when you do your driveway.
Yeah, that, and that's that's really why I asked the question.
Right, yeah, um, we may find it when we do any excavation to put the driveway base in, and then we'll have to deal with it at that point.
Okay.
Whether it's something we could just put a catch basin top on.
Right.
Or, you know, and utilize, um, we won't know till we till we discover it.
Okay. But, but if you do come across that.
But it appears to be on your property.
It appears that way.
And if you do do come across it and have to.
Or not.
It may be further this way, I, you know, I'm not sure, it's very close to where the boundary line is, so, and may, or it may even be within the town right of way.
Right.
It's, we weren't able to measure from the end.
Yeah.
In to where, where it appeared.
But if work has to be done to that.
Naturally, we would, you know, put in protections to, uh, on the outlet to to prevent anything from running through when there's work done on the upstream side.
So basically, if you do find something, you've gotta notify the town's staff immediately.
Yes.
Right, yeah, understood.
That's weird, though, that. You really did.
I think it's probably a yard drain type scenario.
Could be.
Because I see so many weird, like, fieldstone structures around that are, whether it's a manhole, a catch basin, a dry well, you can call it a lot of things, but a lot of times it's water coming in.
There's no, no sign of a top anywhere.
No, right, and.
It may be something they just put the driveway over.
Yeah, maybe it got forgotten about. It's hard to say, but. I know I I've come across with engineering before on Pineville, some that are coming from the upper hill down, or some interesting ones that have been tied into catch basins, um, that, uh, just have been there a long time.
Yeah, well, thi- this ac- outlet actually shows up, I wanna say it was in the seventies, there's a subdivision map that was done across the street, and they actually have that plate shown just poking out of the ground, they didn't have a source for it at that point in time. They did show a, on that subdivision map, a proposed drainage easement to the town. Couldn't find a deed where it was ever executed, sounds familiar, but, um, so, um, I don't know what the. I don't know at this point, you know, if we do put a catch basin top on there, what what that would indicate in that.
Yeah.
In that light.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve application twenty-three dash fifteen eighty-one.
Motion's made and seconded to approve application twenty-three dash fifteen eighty-one of JPF Rentals. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright.
Good luck.
Yeah. This was the least of it. Alright, new business, did we have anything else come in?
So, under new business, and I believe we have, uh, representatives, representatives from F and W LLC, um, the forester, it's a jurisdictional ruling for notification
Yep.
of timber harvest, um, and, uh, we have some of those gentlemen on right now, so I'm gonna open the floor up to them. Eric, if you wanna just go over the project?
Sure, yep, um, so, Dan and Karen Jackson, uh, are gonna be doing a, uh, small timber harvest on two of their properties, um, and they're, uh, in total, uh, gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, I don't remember off the top of my head, it's ten acres or, uh, approximately, or a little less. And, uh, there are two different blocks, uh, in which there's gonna be, um, some timber harvesting done, and the treatments are gonna range from, um, uh, small patch cut to thinning, and then crop tree release.
While he's bringing that up, Eric, where where exactly is it on Hartford Pike?
So this is right before Pomfret.
Okay, it's right there, that's what I thought, it had to be right at the river.
Ri- right there in, uh, was it, is it Litchfield? No, uh.
Yeah, that's Litchfield.
Litchfield, yeah.
Right on the line.
Yep, the intersection of Hartford Pike and Litchfield.
Okay.
Um, and it's the two different properties, so three and thirty-five, three is the one that is right against, uh, the river.
Yep.
Thirty-five is the one that has the house.
Okay.
If if it would be, if it would be helpful, I can, and I don't know if I have the ability to do this, but I I would be happy to share my screen to be able to show you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
The exact location.
Yeah, go ahead. You should have the permission to.
Alright, can you see it?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, so these are the, these are the areas, um, the town line is just over here, uh, and here, uh, can you see my cursor moving or no?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and then obviously, here's the, here's the river, um, this area right here, these couple acres of crop tree release, um, uh, just to put a slightly finer point on that, that is a, that's a treatment in which, um, specific trees are chosen as your crop trees, which are the trees that you're gonna try to retain and grow, and you cut a handful of trees around them in order to release crowns of the trees that you're, uh, trying to, um, continue to grow, in this particular case, it's gonna be a combination of pine, oak, hickory, and cherry primarily, uh, with, uh, high-quality individuals of, um, other trees mixed in. This purple area, um, is gonna be the, uh, gonna be the thinning, and then there are two small patch cut areas on either side here. So currently, uh, with all this work, um, or perhaps, um, I should say, after all the, all the cutting has been done, which, uh, they're planning to do this winter, um, there's gonna be a follow-up application of, um, uh, herbicide to control the invasive plants. The, uh, Jonathan had asked a question the other day, uh, which I I did not get an answer to actually, uh, which was, what are the actual treatments that are gonna be uh, done to control the invasives, and I I reached out to the contractor that's gonna be doing the work on, um, a couple times last week, uh, with mails and, uh, emails that have not heard back yet, that is not something that I'm directly overseeing, uh, so I'm gonna work with the landlord and just make sure we get answers to that, but I don't have, Jonathan, I don't have the answer to your question as of yet.
Okay.
Would that be part of this application, would that be a different, that's the only thing I'm wondering?
Um, so the, a lot of that, like, with the herbicides and everything like that, um, the state just wants the individual doing that to be licensed, and they have their own oversight of that, um, working on previous timber harvests where we've gotten, you know, similar, um, descriptions, there's a lot of that treatment of the invasives right now. Uh, we've worked with some of the contractors in the past and had them show us the process, um, went on-site, you know, visited with some of them, um, uh, doing those processes, um. It's not rocket science, uh, with it, um, they use it sparingly, um, this this area, particularly Three Hartford Pike, I'd be a little concerned just because.
Cause you're on top of the river.
You're on top of the river, um, there has been, um, some species in that area before that have come up on other projects or just south of there. Um, there's some town-owned property, and as you move further down towards Rogers Corporation, um, I know there's been, um, some, like, box turtle habitats and whatnot in the, in those areas. So we would just wanna be mindful that there's no real machinery, um, going down in those areas, you know, uh, right against, other than, you know, people on foot, you know, um, uh, doing, you know, kinda treatments and stuff, but, um, I would, I would assume if that's being done in a later phase, um, that we could just get some information prior to then, and it could be dealt with similarly as a, uh, notification.
Yep, yep, that sounds fine, and I'm actively working to get that information, um, so make sure you got everything before before it happens, um. I, I think the vast majority of what's gonna be going on, um, closer to the river is just, um, on foot, in in terms of the, um, in terms of the, um, invasive plant treatments, uh, it's it's just gonna be on foot, I don't see them taking any equipment in there, there may be some, uh, equipment taken into the, uh, you see, uh, that area in kind of the northwest corner of, uh, this property, that's point nine acres, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yes.
Um, so there may be some equipment in there because the invasives there are just horrendous, and I'm not sure that they would physically be able to to do it without first treating, uh, with with some sort of equipment.
So this is not a typical timber harvest like we normally see, this is really more of a reclamation and, uh, wildlife, because they've got the wildlife structure spotted on there and everything else, it's more of a reclamation and and, uh, management type, type of a situation.
There's not a lot of timber in this.
It's more of a cleanup.
Um, so it's, it's gonna be a combination, and that structure is basically just the, it, we didn't necessarily need to put that on this map, but that's just the installation of a, um, uh, of a wood duck box.
Yes, things like that.
Along, along the river there, just for.
Paul just asked too, patch cut, that's not a, patch cut, that's not a.
A normal term, I don't know.
Yeah, that's not a term we've normally heard either, what are you referring to as a patch cut area?
So, patch cut is, uh, another, another phrase for, um, like, a small-scale, uh, patch clear cut in which, um, all or most trees in a given area are removed in order to create, um, young forest conditions and to regenerate that area.
For the, for the crop cut area, um, how is that work?
Crop tree release?
Yes, how is that work performed, is that with machinery, or is that, is that done by hand?
Yeah, that's a great question, um, so the short answer is, we don't know who's gonna be doing the work yet, uh, and we don't actually know, uh, if there's gonna be any merchantable volume uh, or timber, uh, coming out of there, um, my assumption, but I don't know if that's, um, real at this point, but my assumption is it's probably gonna be, um, hand-felled and probably retained on-site, uh, only because the, um, um, most of that area is is gonna be kinda complicated to get to, um, but I, I don't know that for sure at this point.
And and we don't know if this is any sort of known wildlife habitat over there, right?
Uh. Oh, go ahead.
Are you talking to me?
If you know the answer.
So there, we did, uh, we did an NDBB review, um, for the management plan that we developed, which was back in twenty twenty, I believe, uh, and I don't have that at my fingertips, but I'm, I'd be happy to send that to you if, uh, if you'd be interested.
Uh, yeah, I would be interested in that.
Yeah, Staffwood as well, yeah, um.
Okay.
Is this part of, like, the USDA forest management plans?
It's almost as, this even regulate, is, are they just managing and cleaning up?
Is this part of?
Are they something, are they? This is weird, this is different.
It's, it is different, but my concern is, if there's known wildlife habitat there, that should be our concern, and we should probably require exclusion fencing if that is known habitat over there.
So we would have to see the report.
Right, right.
We'd also have to to see what on the report is, um, can be disclosed, um, cause sometimes they are.
Right, correct.
Subject to privacy.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm concerned with that, um, if that is habitat along that river, then we should require something to exclude that area.
Yeah.
Some sort of exclusion.
And I, and I would imagine that is primarily just on Three Hartford Pike, if there, if there's gonna be anything.
Right.
It's on three, um, so Eric, is that something you'd be able to share with us?
Um, I'll, I'll talk with NDB about that.
Okay.
Cause I'm not sure what, um, what they're comfortable reviewing or revi- um, um, sending to, um, uh, something that's gonna be publicly available.
Yeah.
So I'll figure out with them what what they're comfortable with and how best to get you, uh, the information that you need.
It is different.
Um, we are working with, um, NRCS to be able to do this, so there are seasonal restrictions during which we cannot do any, any cutting. What was that?
That's the program that I was asking about, I know it by the USDA, but it's the NRCS, I have the same type of management plan at home.
NRCS is a branch of USDA.
Yep, yep.
And, and, you know, we're, we're working with them to, uh, to get this done.
And the other thing that you may wanna look at is US Fish and Wildlife, um, because if if this is northern long-eared bat area, you're gonna have to get that cut quick before spring.
Right, well, I mean, the the restrictions for birds and bats start on the same day, April fifteenth.
Yep, okay.
So, whatever is gonna be, whatever's gonna be cut has to be done before April fifteenth, otherwise we're looking at sometime, uh, after November.
Yeah, correct. Okay.
Was the Audubon Society involved at all?
That's a really good question, um, and I do know the answer to that, I'm not sure if I can tell you, but, um.
I'm only asking because they will cite in there the specific species of any sort of, you know, like waterfall or whatever that has been found in those areas, and and that should be in the plan.
Yes, so, um. Yes.
So you can let us know.
And I don't have the the timber notification in front of me, tentatively, what, in a perfect world, what was the start date?
Um, let me see if I can, uh, pull that up as, as we're talking. Uh, oh, it's right here, uh, what did I say?
It's the only comforting fact, I think NRCS will be pretty much on top of.
I said two one twenty-four.
Whatever's in that corridor, cause that's right there on top of the river, that one side of the road, that bothers me.
So, our next wetlands meeting is two five.
You don't think so, I think they would be.
When, when's the proposed start date, excuse me?
So the proposed start date, as I have it in here, is two one twenty-four, I'm not sure, um, if that is feasible or reasonable, because I, I don't know if the landlord has, um, found an operator who's willing and able to do it this winter yet.
I, I. Man. I think we're lacking information.
Yeah.
Um, I think we're gonna have to table this until we get information.
I'm more concerned, to be honest with you, it's this number three, Three Hartford Pike, the strip along.
Yes.
It's a strip along the river.
Yes.
The other piece.
The other piece I'm not worried about, they, like I said, US Wildlife might have a, an issue if it's northern long-eared bat, then he knows he's gotta get it down before April fifteenth. But is, it's that strip along the river.
Yeah, re- regardless of whether, whether or not northern long-eared bat is is known to be occurring here or in the area, um, because we're working with NRCS, everything's gotta be done by April fifteenth regardless.
No thinking.
Well, I, 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 in my opinion, I, I think this needs to be tabled, and and we need that additional information, if they, if it can be shared with us.
Yeah, well, um, and give me if I'm wrong, i- I noticed, like, the board footage, and and it might be just at what point you need a forester. This is definitely a smaller project in terms of, like, I, normally the threshold to me that comes up to mind is five thousand board feet.
Twenty, twenty-five thousand board feet.
Oh, it's only twenty-five, okay.
Twenty-five, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about something very small here.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so, yeah, like, the, it's a very small notification, for sure, uh, but, yeah, if, if, and I will double-check the procedures in regards to the disclosures, you know, but if there's recommendations in that, um, to what, to avoid or precautionary.
So at this point, though, I think Jonathan, what we're saying is we're gonna hold off on it being a jurisdictional ruling.
Yes.
Yeah.
And to get some more detail about what's going on on that, that wasn't narrow, that's a very narrow pathway there along the river.
It is.
Which, I think, I think if there's precautionary measures without even disclosing. Which I think, I think if there's precautionary measures without even disclosing the species, if there's precautionary measures that can be worked into the plan, we would be in a better position to act jurisdictionally.
What does that look like?
So, so like Ronnie was referencing, like exclusionary fencing, or if there's, you know, like a hard buffer on the edge of the wetland or the river, where nothing should be done, for instance, I'm not sure if there's any information in the report that could then be worked into this forest management plan.
So there is, I don't know if you can tell, but the, this line here, which is the western line of the crop tree release area, there is a narrow buffer between the river and where treatment is being planned. And this is, you know, this is obviously just on paper, if it makes sense, we can back off even more, but we will not be cutting right up to the water course.
Yeah, so like, if we could have a number on that, like, what is it, you know, and obviously, like, in the field, that can be flagged out and stuff, you know, cursory, you know, from the edge of the, from the edge of the river.
They're looking for jurisdictional ruling, I don't think anyone would have an issue with splitting it and allowing a jurisdictional ruling on thirty-five, but I don't see a jurisdictional ruling happening on three, do you?
No, and I think that's what makes sense, if they do another application for the other side.
So the way we historically have been doing these jurisdictional rulings, staff assigns an application number, we don't have them fill out anything other than submitting the timber harvest.
Yep.
If the commission wanted to take action on thirty-five excluding three Hartford Pike...
Well, that way if they wanted to get going on something.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
And we can do that even though it's all under one number.
I don't see why not, it's jurisdictional, so you're saying that if the work that is being presented on thirty-five does not rise to the level of being a permitted activity.
That's right.
Right, so, and all, you know, measures are being taken there, so...
I'm sure, that's what I heard you say.
That is, that's exactly what I said.
Exactly what you said.
That's exactly what I said.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, that the activities at thirty-five Hartford Pike do not rise to the occasion of needing a permit and can qualify as direct jurisdictional ruling, and I think it's okay to also assume that activity at three Hartford Pike does need to come back as an application next month. But this would, I assume, be our acceptance, so it could be acted upon next month, am I correct or not?
Well, I think we started with three, so I wouldn't say, again, we're looking at it whether or not it would be jurisdictional on its face value.
Right.
You know, the original request is for that jurisdictional, we haven't collected a fee or had them fill out an application. Historically, when we've had jurisdictional ones, go over, you know, that threshold and say, now it's permitted, and maybe we need X, Y, and Z, we've said that they were received on that night.
Okay.
So, and that's within your purview, I believe, so, but, so we're only taking action on thirty-five, I would say three, we are tabling.
We're tabling to next month.
Tabling three for action next month.
Okay, and I believe there's a motion and a second.
There was, correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. So they're all set to do as, as they have proposed at thirty-five, and just let us know what's, a little more detail on what's happening along the river.
Eric, do you have any questions on that?
I do, actually, so what I heard you say is, if I can get you the NDB report, figure out if, what other details I can share from the management plan and get you a figure that we're staying back from the river?
Yep, yep.
Is that it, or was there more?
No, I think that's, I think that's it on three.
Yes.
Okay.
But if they can find someone...
I can tell you, my employees on the line with me, and he did some mapping as we're online here, and he said that at no point is the, is the proposed cut line any closer than fifty feet from the river.
Okay.
So I don't know if that helps at all.
It does help, I think it's mainly the question of the treatment, if we're saying that the invasive species treatment is, you know, an activity that is being within, done within the upland review, we just wanna make sure that we're aware of the method for that, and make sure that that method doesn't directly conflict with any species that might have been identified in that area.
Correct.
And it's also giving your clients the opportunity to get going on their project if they're fortunate enough to find someone to do the work in the next three weeks. That's, that's a stretch as well, that they'd be able to find someone. But if they can get somebody, the bulk of it can be done, we're just a little more concerned about, that's, that's right, that's sitting right on top of the quinabok, right on top of it.
Yep.
So we'll just get that figured out, but they can get started, they probably can't get too much done.
The next meeting then is the fifth, is that reasonable?
The next meeting is February fifth.
First Monday.
February fifth, and you're welcome to send Eric that information over to me, or reach out to me anytime in between, so that way, you know, I can always touch, if there's anything more technical, I can touch base with the town engineer on. Okay, you're good.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop sharing here.
Yeah, I bet you are.
All right, so I guess we will see you back here on the fifth.
All right.
Yep.
But like I said, they can get going on ninety percent of it, that whole other, on thirty-five.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
All right. Wait for Jonathan to get back.
Always thinking about the audience, I'm changing the camera angle.
Oh, okay. All right, what do you, enough for correspondence? Or is that what you were making Alex stay for?
I'm just making Alex stay for that. So our Bear Hill project has started with the bridge replacement, covert replacement in that area. One item that was kinda added to it in terms of needing to just work out, because we have two sides, so one side has, the northern side has plenty of area to turn around on, the southern side, not so much, it's much narrower, it gets a lot narrower as you, as you move further down the property, so a proposed temporary turnaround was included or installed on seventy-five Bear Hill. So seventy-five Bear Hill, you might remember from a different NCRS project for a forestry thing where there was already an apron installed, or some hardening of the existing driveway, done with gravel. This is just to the east of that, so we have like a little detail to show you guys, staff looked at it and coordinated with engineering. We didn't think it rose to a major modification of the proposed plan, or the previously approved plans for the Bear Hill. So it's temporary, it's meant to be removed at the close of the project. But it's in, it's within your upland review area.
And aside from passenger vehicles turning around, we were really thinking about buses and plows, I mean, that was kind of the bulk of the thought process, if you will.
Yeah, that would not be a fun area to back out of, right there, I don't know, it's not a well-traveled road, but it's narrow enough that you would want some sort of turnaround. The shoulders are not hard in that area.
Doesn't appear as much of an alternative, does it, to you?
I don't think there's really an alternative.
You gotta back around.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that's why, you know, staff didn't look to hold up the project, it has been installed, but we wanted to just keep you in the loop, you know, for that, because it was something you previously approved, and we've just added it to that project. As roadwork, essentially.
Yeah, it doesn't look to be much of an alternative there, so.
Anything else from you, and then we can hear stories, we like stories, you know? We do, we haven't gotten any in a long time.
No, so, and I have no other staff reports or anything, we have a town council liaison.
Like I said, we like little, come, tell us what's up.
Join us.
We like stories, we like to know what's going on, we like little stories.
Get an update from, like, town council meeting, if there's any new business.
Just the goings on.
The goings on, yes, that's a nice one. The goings on, we like the goings on. Goings on are always nice to hear, unless they're not.
Sometimes they're not.
Well, the taxes going up, no, I'm just kidding.
Mill rates going down.
No, we have to pay for everything, I'm just kidding. So the reevaluations, obviously, speaking of taxes, everybody's kinda in an uproar about that, obviously.
Because they think that their next tax payment is going to be...
Everybody thinks that, you know, it's not gonna, like you, it's, like you had mentioned, they think it's not gonna go down, and, you know, so we're working through that, budget season's coming up, so that's always a tense season, but we really need people to come out, we need the voters to come out, we can't, we can't, you know, how do you approve a budget with, you know, ten, not even ten percent of the people voting out there, so... Sorry, I wasn't prepared. Put me on the spot.
You can make it up.
Yeah, any questions?
Just make it up, so, oh, yeah.
I did, I said the taxes are gonna go.
Turn my mic on? Sure, here's a question for you then, so the reevaluations came out on our house, we make a phone call in, are they ever gonna respond to your phone calls?
Have they not responded?
They have not responded.
They have not responded.
So that was Tyler you reached out to, or the assessor, or both?
No, I had, I called in and made, you know, and we had a nice talk with the assessor, or Tyler, whoever.
Yeah, right, the firm that did the reassessments, right.
Voiced my appeal and gave them all the information on it, and then they said that the next step would be to get a letter or whatever, and then if you wanted to go to an actual appeal, they would tell you how to do that.
Right, okay, let me ask about that.
Is that the status?
I can say I saw the assessor's office print off about thirteen hundred letters.
I bet you're one of those.
Earlier in the week, so, or last, end of last week.
Did you have an average?
Checks us all accordingly.
What the, what the average house went up, do you have a percent number? And when went thrown out?
I would have to say it's probably close to fifty percent.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I have a lot to say about that, but...
I would've been happy with fifty percent, mine was much higher.
Was it, really?
Yeah, well, I did a large project in my house, but mine went up eighty-five percent prior to that project, about a month before the revow, and then, and then probably fifty percent on top of that.
Right.
No, I got another question for you, now you get me going.
Okay.
All right, so, and I don't know if you're aware of this, or not aware of this, so in the last storm, that we lost power for two and a half days, all right? I live at Alexander's Lake, all right? Well, we had six people's houses, the sewerage back up into the house. One of the, one of the people, the sewer backs up into the house, and it goes right into the lake.
Although, I'll be honest with you, I remember the second day of the storm, we were still out of power, I was up at a farm in Hampton, I was at Wood Hill testing, because they were running on their generators anyhow, so it didn't matter, and I got a text from Jehola, thanks, thank your husband and Max for everything they did today, and I let myself, huh, don't know what that's about, it's Jehola, you know how he can get? So then, I'm up there, they had no power and everything, and up there, right at the Hampton pontiff line, power comes and goes, and reception comes and goes, so then about two hours after that, I got a text from Jehola, looking for the two of them, to see if George could come and get, that Randy had gotten some big generators from Porter, to try to run up at the lake and the one in Brooklyn, because that's, that's a pump station.
Pump station, yeah.
But that's also Killingley's, even though it's in Brooklyn.
Right.
If they could get over there with diesel fuel, so I do know that that's what happened, that Randy and Jehola tracked down generators.
To run them.
Yeah, because George went, because, like I said, I got, he got, can you find your husband, it's like...
So the pump stations were down?
Well, they lose power.
Right, but there's no backup generator?
Yeah, so why don't these pump stations have backup generators?
Wow, I can't believe I'm asking that question.
Because that was Tuesday, because I found my husband, who was not the vendor for the town of Killingley, to come with the diesel fuel, and Randy got...
Probably Tommy.
Or at least a plan.
He got some...
Or have, or somebody with, with generators to get these things going.
Right, they should have at least a few twenty-five KWs just to tow around, they're not that expensive.
Just in case you need them. But I know they went to the one in Brooklyn, over by the under fairgrounds road there, right by...
Correct, Mason Hill Road is one right there.
The one down there, because even though that's in Brooklyn, that's still Killingley sewage.
Because we know that jail people still have to use water.
You got it, and I know that Max said they went up near Frito, maybe?
Yeah, Alexander's Lake, like I said, I know six to eight people that had all backed up and came into their house.
So it would've been late Tuesday when Jehola tracked down George, put fuel in these generators that Randy found somewhere.
Did you contact, did somebody contact anybody about the sewer backing up into their house, and what was their response?
Well, the first person that did, they contacted, and the public works went right out there with generators and got them going, but by then, it's already coming out, out of the manholes and over the road and everything else, so...
Right, if you lose power, I would imagine there would've been an alarm, at least, at least a...
Well, you can't have an alarm.
You can't have an alarm without power, right, well, with a battery backup, I mean, yeah, you can't.
There is no, there's, for some, it's just, just for your information, that, you know, why these, with the standby generators we have now, why aren't they at these pumps?
Yeah, they should already be there.
Right, any pump station should have a backup generator.
Yes, we think so.
Because I know George said that Jehola got hold of him, and he told him to get over, you know, as soon as he could, but that Randy was still getting the generators.
Ready for tomorrow.
Get ready?
Right, we have another four inches.
Four inches of rain coming, yeah.
My shop in Nowitz, the water, the water from the river came right up to our, right up to our driveway, flooded everything. I can imagine with all the snow, all the melting.
Oh, yeah.
Crazy, and I can imagine this.
The hard part about this, too, is we have two friends, one of the guy had backed up in his basement three times, cost him fifteen hundred dollars to clean it out each time, and when he talked to the town, the town said they were not liable for any of this, or any damage done in his house.
Really? Act of God.
Well, I guess there's something, I don't know, in the insurance waivers or something, but...
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure there's a waiver of you.
But I still think they should have standby generators at all these pump stations, or have the ability to get somebody out to have a service that does this.
They should be able to retrofit some kind of high-level alarm with a, with a simple battery backup with a solar, with a solar panel, for pretty reason.
It was four twenty on that Tuesday before it was being addressed.
Backup alarms, yeah, there's, there's a lot of them, I used to work for a low-voltage company, so like, there's a lot of solutions, even just with a simple onsite battery, where it could, it could send out a signal to alert through like phone line or something. The issue could come in depending on, like, if it's tree damage, it rips out the lines, you might not get that signal, you might get an onsite alarm, like an audible alarm.
And it could with a hurricane or anything.
But as far as the whole situation, I wasn't privy to that, so...
I, yeah, I'm surprised they didn't bring that up.
I would defer to the, you know, the wastewater, WPCA or Town Manager's Office.
Because Mark Jehola happened to be on duty as one of our cops.
I'm, being that it's something that might've just happened, it might be something that's due for an update on your guys' end at some point.
That's interesting. Scary, a little bit.
Well, the hard, like I was just telling Cindy, the part is, is right now Alexander's Lake's at the lowest amount of people that you're gonna have at the lake, you know, so if this had happened when?
Peak, yeah.
Peak time.
And you can get a hurricane then, just as easily as...
Hundred percent. At least we should be monitoring anyway.
Or, or have the ability to have generators of the towns, you know, to use, the town should have its own backup, source of backup generators to get there.
Have to find out how many pump stations there are and what's the...
I think most of the new ones probably are automatically equipped with the.
There's six of them.
Six.
Were there any issues other than those two that they went to?
There's only six pump stations.
Were the others okay, or just the two that they went to?
On south shore.
Oh, on south shore.
Oh, okay.
I can't, I know a good deal about what you're discussing. I can't really speak on it confidently. Dave Cap knows the ins and the outs of it. I would love to share, but it's an unfortunate scenario. That's without question. The backup generators being onsite poses a issue with, I guess, property owners and what have you have. I mean, most of these pump stations look like, you know, a small canister, really. You would not think it's a pump station if you didn't know what it was, so, you know, then you plop a generator next to it. Again, multifaceted issue, for sure, and.
You're not necessarily dealing with just like a transfer switch where you plug in physically a generator. A lot of times for a facility like for here, um, instance, you're subject to monthly tests, automatic tests. So, uh, I'm sure there's a lot involved.
There's no stanchion where you would just plug in a.
So that would be like a transfer, like a tran, like if it was just a transfer switch type of thing, or or something to plug in. I'm not sure. Again, we would, we, we're gonna, I will make sure to have some more information for, hopefully for next month for you guys. Uh, and I'm sure you guys will get some more information, you know, prior to that, um, but not having all the facts, so.
What I can say is, Dave, that's been on the forefront of what he's been doing. That's absolutely I don't wanna say the only thing he's been working on, but it by far the most important, and it's.
And I can understand that, because I'll guarantee you, people at the lake will bitch when, because it's too noisy when it comes on to generate every two weeks.
That was kind of my.
Well, it's better than uh, backing up.
For sure, agreed.
I know, I I have seen WPCA down on Island and
I have too.
And and whatnot, um, saw a mill in that area and stuff, a bunch of their trucks this week, and I think some subcontractors as well.
Maybe we'll have an update for the next meeting.
More little stories, like stories.
Stories are good. Biggest story is getting people out.
That's why it works, it works both ways, you know, the liaison comes, you learn some things too, you know.
Right, yeah, no, I was definitely surprised with this. Definitely not prepared, but uh, I mean, if anybody can, I think the most frustrating thing for me is to see the lack of participation for the town. You know, for the for the voters in the town. I think it's, you have so many people, we had a couple of young kids come into my shop the other day, and they were complaining about this and complaining about that, and I said, did you guys go vote? Oh, no. I said, well, you have nothing to complain about. So, you know, if we could get participation in the town, then at least it's a, it's a broad, it's a good cross-section for voting and whatnot.
Other than Facebook.
Other than Facebook, right, yeah.
They all want to contribute to that.
Right. But it's it's, that's the most disappointing thing, I think, being on the town council is seeing that. You know, we had the the uh, the project over at Olin Bell Park. There was thirty-five people that decided where that was gonna go, you know. So it's tough to, tough to see that.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
We don't even have a sidewalk to make him go on with us or anything.
No, no.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.